At 6:30, we're going to call the meeting into order. The pledge of allegiance will be read by Mike Simpson, followed by the invocation by Bob Heinzelmann.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we praise you. We come to you today, and we just thank you for the blessings that you bestow upon this great city of Chavano Park, the great state of Texas, and these United States, Lord. And we just thank you for the leaders. We ask that you be with them, help them to make good decisions on the behalf of the citizens, Lord, that you have these leaders represent us, and that the leaders here tonight represent the city in a way that would be pleasing to you, Lord. Lord, we come with heavy hearts today, Lord, in that the tragedies and the flooding that the state of Texas and now Louisiana, and certainly many parts of Houston are going through, Lord. And sometimes, we don't understand exactly why these things happen, but we trust in you. We know you're the sovereign God, and we know that good things will come out of these tragedies. But, Lord, we also know that many people are suffering, and although we have sunshine shining in San Antonio right now, we know that's not the case in Houston and many other cities east of us, Lord. We ask that you reach deep down, allow each one of us to reach deep down, and try to figure out what it is that we can do to help anybody, neighbors, friends, strangers, that are suffering right now, Lord. And we know that many people are doing that, Lord, and we ask that you help us help each and every one of those people that are suffering right now, and that you protect the elderly, that you protect the homeless, that you protect the children, Lord, and just allow us to get through this. Give us comfort and peace. Give those folks comfort and peace, that everything will be okay, and we know it will take time, Lord, but we know it's in your hands. Lord, thank you for your son. It's in Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Citizens to be heard, Dagny Florine, followed by Bill Simmons. Bill, would you be ready to speak after Dagny? Dagny, if you'd give your full name and where you live, please.
Dagny Florine, 111 Post Oakway. I'd like to talk briefly about the muni track proposal that's pending, and also about the Core Research Survey, which was done a while back. The results of the Core Research Survey regarding what to do or not do with the municipal tract were released just a year and a half ago. The data showed that a majority of citizens prefer the muni tract be left alone. Since then, I've heard more than once from certain members of council that the over $10,000 survey was flawed. Most recently was at last Monday night's budget workshop, and now there's a proposal for a variety of projects that will impact the use of the municipal tract and disturb the peaceful habitat of wild animals who live there. I have a few questions for those of you on council who've dismissed the Core Survey as flawed. Our city manager, along with council, selected the research firm that designed and carried out the Core Survey. If you consider the outcome flawed, look in the mirror, it was your fault at our expense. Did anyone contact Core Research about your displeasure with their performance? And if so, what did they say in their defense? If not, you shouldn't, in a cavalier fashion, call their survey flawed, especially since none of you, nor am I, are trained in statistics or in conducting research surveys. And regarding the use of the word flawed to describe the survey, I've never heard any of you explain exactly how it was flawed. Stop throwing out the word without defining exactly what you mean. Otherwise, an obvious question is whether it was flawed only to the extent that it failed to reach a specific desired outcome. More recently, I've noticed council is running several surveys through our city website. So who is designing those survey questions, and who is collating and reporting out the results? Given that decisions may be based on results from those surveys, where can we see the final reports? How can we be assured that you've gotten a true representation of all the citizens of Chavano Park? Certainly seniors who are not internet savvy, those who are unfamiliar with the city website are too busy to be checking it, and individuals who prefer not to participate in internet surveys in general will be excluded from the results. Do you care? Honestly, if you don't believe a professional research firm can design and run a survey, why should we believe or trust the results from online surveys run by Survey Monkey? It's time to step back and think about what you're doing. Are you truly interested in doing what the majority of citizens of this community have requested of you? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Bill? Followed by Tommy Payton. Tommy, if you'd be prepared to speak.
Good evening. Thank you. The reason I'm here is-
Bill, if you'd give your full name and your address, please.
Bill Simmons, 130 Wagon Trail Road.
Thank you.
You bet. The reason I'm here is because we have concerns on Wagon Trail about speed and distracted driving. And I believe Mr. Hill had sent y'all an email outlining some of the issues that I've brought before you, but just for the purposes of the audience, what I've done is gone around the city and measured streets relative to their speed limits. I've also looked at the status of either speed bumps, curves, et cetera. This is not a survey done by a professional, just by somebody concerned. What I found is that Wagon Trail is the narrowest street in the city with the highest relative speed limit of 30 miles per hour. Most people drive faster than that on Wagon Trail. And when you're coming down Wagon Trail, you find that there are some curves, and people believe that since it's posted 30 miles per hour, they'll take the curves at 30 miles per hour. And I've almost been hit, along with my daughter, numerous times while walking on the street. And so I've outlined in the letter to y'all other streets that either have wider streets with similar speed limits, lower speed limits, and/or speed bumps or speed humps. One in particular that I really couldn't understand why they have a speed hump is Windmill, because it's a very long straight street, and it's got a speed hump right in the middle of the street. Other speed humps are for more obvious reasons. And so what I was asking y'all to consider is to consider speed humps on Wagon Trail at either end of the curves. I'd love it if the speed limit were reduced, but even if it was or wasn't, people are still going to speed on Wagon Trail. There's no doubt about it. Speed humps are the only way that people are going to have to slow down. Y'all have been patrolling. I want to thank the police department. They were patrolling on my way over here tonight. They've been patrolling more, and the trailer with the radar is on our street. But that's only a temporary fix. I think people need something that's permanent, that will slow them down on that street, excuse me. And I do know that once military goes under construction, that that's going to become a bigger bypass, because people are going to try to hop off military more quickly. And so I'd love to see, if not a speed limit reduction, speed humps. And I don't like going over them any more than anybody else does, but again, I think it's really the only permanent solution to this problem, at least at the curves, for sure. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. As far as speed humps are concerned, those have typically been neighborhood-driven, and we would be very happy to hear from your neighborhood. Bill, if you would get city council the results of the speed survey on Wagon Trail for the last two or three times, that would be very helpful for all the members of city council. So, Bill, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tommy?
Good evening. I'm Tommy Payton. I live at 121 Chavano Drive. Back about 17 or 18 years ago, when we acquired the municipal tract, I was the mayor, and Mayor Warner was also on the city council. Mayor Warner was very instrumental in negotiating and getting the property from our friend at Denton Communities, Senator Rogers' family, and thank them for that. We had a problem back then. We ran out of land. We had the city hall across the street. We needed a bigger city hall. We needed a bigger fire department. We had no place to go. And thanks to Mayor Warner and the council members, we made a deal to get the municipal tract. Back at that time, we did do a survey. We had several community meetings with people that came in. We talked about what we were going to do with the municipal tract. It was intended to have walking trails, maybe a ballpark, a pavilion, or picnic spot, but we wanted to clear it out, and our intention at that time was to clear the underbrush, make it look like over here on the side of the city hall with the trees, where it's nice looking and everything, but have a nice walking trail where the people could walk through there and not be afraid during the day or in the evening of somebody jumping out and getting them. But that was 17, 18 years ago. Our plans were to do a little bit of clearing as we go, and it's been, if we'd done an acre, about an acre a year, it'd be cleared, and it really is a fire hazard with the underbrush that's dead under there, and it's not what it was intended to be when we started. I don't know what happened to the surveys. There was a lot of stuff that disappeared after I left being mayor, but we did have city, at that time, had the citizens that were involved when we got the city hall as to what to do with the tract. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tommy. Brings us to item four. Mike Simpson?
Thank you for coming out, and just keep the folks in east Texas in your prayers and thoughts.
Michelle?
Good afternoon. Thanks for coming out. There are a couple of things I'd like to mention. One, we just sent out a iNFO release on Hurricane Harvey emergency response, so there will be donations accepted for the food bank August 28 through September 30 here at city hall during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. And I'd also like to say that I got my certification, and I am now National Wildlife Federation Wildlife Habitat approved, so I hope everybody gets to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Thank you. Good evening. I also wanted to just mention the iNFO, and there's a copy of, I brought this with us tonight. Thank you to Bill and Xena for acting on this so quickly today. It's been on my heart and mind to do something as a city for the relief effort. And just to point out, on this iNFO, if you don't, and we can make copies of this, there are three or four different links on donating monetarily, material donations, and some of the other opportunities that you can to volunteer or give to the community. But first and foremost, we have boxes out there for the non-perishable food, diapers, et cetera. So I'm going to be sending an email out to the school principals this week. Please forward the iNFO email that you have, or to anyone else you can that can provide in this relief effort. I think we can step up and really help. There's a lot of refugees and evacuees up here from, as we know, and I think we can make a difference in this city, so thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Ariane?
Good evening. Thanks so much for coming out. I appreciate you being here.
Mike?
Good evening. Thank you for being here. I'd also like to ask you to kind of hold out for people in my little adopted town of Rockport. It's been heavily devastated. I took damage in my house. I have a number of friends that have lost everything, and I'm going to be making a lot of trips down there, and over time, if anybody has anything they want me to take down to anybody, I'll be glad to take it when I go. Other than that, thank you for being here, and let's go.
Okay. Which brings us to item 5.1, Proclamations, National Wildlife Federation Community Wildlife Habitat.
Mr. Mayor, point of information, please.
Yes, Mike.
Previously, when we discussed this in the workshop, we requested the information on what this certification entailed. The only thing that I received from the city was a series of point lists for who's doing what. My question is, what are the benefits and what are the responsibilities involved in this, and why is the city council not being included in this decision?
Okay. Mike, just as a point of information, about two months ago, Mike Colomare brought this to us at a workshop and asked if this was something that city council would be interested in pursuing. There was no objection. The idea, I believe at that point, you were informed that there are only two communities in Texas that are National Wildlife certified. Each citizen or business certifies their own property. They are not bound to the certifications that they provide. This is not providing conservation easements on any one of these people. The work that would be provided was going to be provided by a group that consists of Dagny Fisher, Vicky Maisel, Nancy Bula, Gene Countryman, and Kim Lane. And they have now completed most of the administrative work and are diligently working on bringing in citizens and businesses to be certifying their properties. That process is proceeding. It would be something that our city would be recognized as being a green community. I think that there's a lot to be said for that. Our community is already recognized as a firewise community, as a scenic city USA. Part of the scenic city USA designation is that you maintain the natural habitat, and we are also a tree city USA. So this is an activity that we have a group of volunteers that would serve our community, which I think enhances the desirability of Chavano Park, and would certainly be the first community in this area that would be recognized as a national wildlife certified community. But thank you very much for your inquiry. Okay. I would like to invite Vicky Maisel and Dagny to come on down.
Well, come on out next to the tires of people in the city on the TV. Come on. You already know where I'm at. Yeah, look beautiful from this side. Whereas the National Wildlife Federation is preeminent nationally in areas of education and assistance to the public in developing and advocating for natural areas, native landscapes, and the creation of animal habitats. And whereas the National Wildlife Federation Wildlife Habitat Certification Program provides an excellent template by providing the four basic elements for all wildlife need: food, water, cover, and places to race young. And whereas the city of Chavano Park desires to preserve our green space, restore natural communities, and cultivate environmental awareness. And whereas, whether your backyard is small or you have acreage, it is easy to create a space that safely attracts wildlife and helps restore natural habitats. Now, therefore, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Chavano Park, I hereby extend this proclamation that it is the objective of the mayor of the city of Chavano Park to become certified as a National Wildlife Federation Community Wildlife Habitat. And with this word out, I've executed this. I want to thank you ladies. I know the hard work that y'all have been doing, and I know that you've been reaching out to lots and lots of citizens in our community, and that you've actually had a very great crowds row of people stepping forward and saying, "I want to be involved." So please keep up the good work, and I extend to you my thanks and congratulations. Pledge of allegiance. Thank you, ladies.
Item 5.2, announcements, national night out. Mayor Protim Ross.
Hi. I'm not sure how I got this, but it's always the second week of October. This year, it'll be October 3. As you know, we do two different options. We host within people's homes. They sign up and have events at their houses. And then we also have a big event here at city hall for those who don't have events on their street or in their area. So the event is coordinated through the police chief. If anybody here wants to sign up their home to be involved, please see him, and I'm sure further information will be coming out from the chief probably in the next newsletter. Thank you.
Okay. Which brings us to item 6, 6.1, presentation, semi-annual update, Chavano Park Commercial and Residential Development, Bitter Blue Denton Communities. Dan, is it going to be you and Darrell, or?
Yeah, it'll be a team tag.
What about Mike Jansen? Is he going to be a part of this as well?
He can, if he was. He knows as much about it as we do.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. Curtis, you ready? Steak and shake. Can you go to the, like, the next slide?
Do you want to move it a little?
No, do you have my mats?
No. You want me to send you the table? What?
Ah, damn. Okay. I'm going to make this short, then.
Do we have the planning and zoning packet still loaded on your machine, Curtis?
Didn't you have a old zip drive?
No, it should be on, we don't have that from our packet, from the planning and zoning packet?
They brought a flash drive and then removed it.
Well, we table it until we have what we need.
I can run through it. It's not riveting.
Okay?
Well, it depends on who's listing.
Thank you, Dan. You have a flash drive?
Well, let me start out with Bentley Manor Villas. We built our last unit. We have about 20 lots available as of mid-August, and no more production. We're pretty much through. The rabbits is almost done with his allocation of lots, and Todd Booth has the majority left. So they'll build through those, and that'll be the end of Bentley Manor. And they'll shut the gates, and away we go. So it's all been real good pricing. Pricing has gone up to like $700,000 versus $500,000. It's really risen quite a bit because the demand's there and the supply's low. In Willowood, I think Steve Davis has four lots left. We have no lots available from our end of the business, and there's no more lots to deliver. So that's going to end probably next year sometime mid-year. Huntington, we've closed about half of the subdivision to date in terms of lots, and not all houses. Total lots available right now is 20, and we're building 27 more right now.
So I forgot, when you, in Huntington, you can buy the lot and sit on it forever, or?
You can.
Okay.
You can. Some people have bought and now want to resell, but you still have to use one of the builders that are in there. So that's going pretty well, Huntington. Quite a few starts there, and to be started. The pricing hasn't gone down at all. It's actually kind of going up. It's a very sought-after place for people with a lot of money. Pond Hill Garden Villas, we're going to have a grand opening, I forget the date, October something. I will invite you all. There's six, the, there's actually 39 lots total on that one side that's developed. Three have specs on them, and I think he sold two to be built. That one started a little slow. Hence the grand opening and all the hoopla and things of that nature, so.
So do you think that it'll pick up and you'll go to the other side of the road, or this will be it?
I don't know. We'll see how this goes.
Why do you think it's been so slow? It's under feedback.
I just don't think we have driven to traffic there yet. You know, no one knows where it is, and it's kind of in the midpoint there. It's not on a corner. It's not visible for anything. Willowood started out really slow, too, believe it or not. Anything in mid-range of a street, you know, it's just hard to derive traffic.
And are the prices steady on that, or those going down a little bit because of the demand?
No, they're staying steady. It'll go, it's just going to take a little time.
Dan, did you want to use the pointer for any of the Huntington stuff there?
No.
I know that they platted the 27 that's shown there, lots in the next unit, right? That's been platted already? Just what you just finished?
Yes.
And then, if I'm doing the math correctly, if you subtract, if you add, 82 plus 20 is 102 plus 27, that leaves 45 more lots potentially to be platted. I think you said there was going to be two remaining plats based upon the master design.
About, yes.
Something like that.
Most likely.
Okay.
Those will all pretty much back out to Slade Creek.
And that's all back in this area here that's not developed?
Be all kind of greenbelt lots, or half of them would be greenbelt lots.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I can't hear the presenter.
Okay. Okay. Curtis, maybe turn his mic up a little bit.
I wasn't talking into it.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr.
So, Dan, how many lots are you projecting in the period from October 1 to September 30 of next year? Do you have an estimation of?
I think Bentley Manor will be close to being sold out, like 20 lots. Huntington, the 20 that are on the ground right now are not the most desirable lots, so they'll, you know, 15 of those will sit for a while until the demand, until they can't find something else, we don't deliver something else, and probably, I bet you the builders will take four, five each, 15. And then there'll be some individual sales, so another five. So we're talking about 25 lots. Pond Hill is a different deal. I can't really, I don't know, we don't have a history, so just be guessing.
Are people that are coming liking the floor plans and the, we don't know.
I don't know. It's really Steve Davis's project in Laddie's, and, you know, it's really in its infancy. He hasn't even finished the specs yet, so.
Oh, really? It's been under construction for some time now?
Yes.
Anything else that you'd like to tell us about the residential development?
Yeah, sorry, it's running out.
That's all right. You're across the street, or up the road, or across the highway.
Yeah. It's been good. I mean, it's, we've held pricing and raised pricing, and I'll probably raise pricing again in Huntington, try to slow it down even a little bit, to the point of slowing it down. You know, we're averaging, on a lot price, I think it's 325, so probably get it up to 350. Last units, maybe get it up to 400. I don't know.
Well, y'all have certainly been in the community a long time, and Laddie's dad got here in 1983, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir.
And since 1995, y'all have completed Chavano Creek and come forward, and finished off the estates as well during that period of time.
Correct.
It's been a lot of acreage.
It has.
Well, very good. All right. Darrell, you ready?
Yes, sir.
I wish it was more exciting, but it's just not.
Mr. Hill, do you have your, can I have mine? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Speaking of the mic.
Good evening, Mayor. Is that better?
Yeah, it's good.
All right. Hi, Darrell Lang with Bitter Blue, working with the commercial sales. I know you've seen a lot of these slides before. We'll be updating these for the next presentation because some things have changed, and I'll point those out to you. But again, overall, very robust along the 1604 corridor, still seeing good growth in, you know, commercial in the office sector, small office, and also restaurant-
Good evening, Mayor. Is that better?
Yeah, it's good.
All right. Hi, Daryl Lang with Bitter Blue, working with the commercial sales. I know you've seen a lot of these slides before. We'll be updating these for the next presentation because some things have changed and I'll point those out to you. But again, overall, very robust along the sixteen oh four corridor. Still seeing good growth in, you know, commercial in the office sector, small office and also restaurants. And so I just wanna go down through kinda the same thing. Some areas were actually on maybe the last, you know, one or two tracks in a, you know, certain unit. But I'd just like to go through and give you a high-level overview and then any questions, just ask away. We're gonna jump right over to Lock Hill Selma corridor and, you know, that's been very active with, you know, small office users. You know, in the five thousand to ten thousand square foot garden-type office, you know, your professionals, psychiatrists, attorneys, you know, those type, you know, accountants, and that's been very successful. Uh, the only tracks we have remaining, we have this little two-acre, about two-point-six acres that we've been working with Brandon on with the drain and we have that finished up now. That'll be closing in about two to three weeks, but everything else here, you know, has been, you know, sold. Uh, I haven't heard the latest of one Paramount. I'm not sure if they've submitted for building permits yet or whatnot because that's, you know, a pretty large track that's still vacant there. But the only track available is going to be, I don't wanna get the mayor's eyes, but it's a little two-acre site there right at the, right on the other side of CVS. Exactly. It's a big hole and we're really just, you know, really not actively marketing that right now. Um, you know, we've had certain users come approach us, but really not the right use to the doorway of, you know, city of Chavino Park. So again, Lock Hill Selma is pretty much, you know, going to be sold out at this point after that two-point-six acres, you know, deal closes. So that will be Lock Hill Selma. I wanna shift over here to Pond Hill. There's been some changes here. Um, you know, all that office is now on sixteen oh four, so that's been leased up. What we have listed here as Tubers Barbecue, we could not make that deal work. I'll be revising this for future presentations. Um, we're gonna be remarketing that space either as a build-to-suit for, we've got several prospects for other restaurants or potentially a sale, but the idea is to keep it the same. It's not to subdivide it, you know, but keep that same concept. We think it's gonna be a killer concept for, you know, for the right user there. Um, so we're out there actively marketing that. A Pond Hill Retail, that's all leased up. You have local coffee in there. You have a, I think a private, yeah, posh, you know, nail salon. You have a dentist and then a, like a private, private athletic trainer, you know, there. So that's all filled, filled up and locals keeping them busy there, so. This is just another rendering of Pond Hill Road West. Again, future commercial and then, you know, the, what we're calling just a, it's a generic restaurant site right now, but it can be adapted to a lot of different users. And again, we do have interest from at least two users right now, both local and no pun intended with local coffee, but two users local and, you know, as we get a little bit further along, we'll be able to divulge a bit.
So your intent is to keep it a restaurant at all possible?
Yes.
You said you could re, I mean, I guess you could replat it, but that's the intent?
Exactly. We, we have a lot of resources invested, you know, in that particular three-acre track as far as architecture, as far as the engineering, you know, the water quality, you know, everything is teed up for that use right there. Doesn't mean we can't switch some things around, but in general, we'd like to try to keep that same, you know, two-and-a-half to three-acre format. You know, the trees are beautiful in there, the pond. I mean, it's just, it's just a great sight. And as you have more and more activity, we have more rooftops, we have Chavino Highlands, you know, places to eat is, that's going to be the real need there. Another office building is not needed there, but something where folks can go, probably more casual, you know, family-oriented, kid-oriented. I mean, that's where we're going as a society. It's not, you know, fine dining, French restaurant there. It's something where you got the kids and go in shorts and, and get something to eat, so. This is just another rendering or, let's see here. I've changed these up a little bit. This is the Pond Hill Retail. Okay, I'm gonna shift right in. Some of these slides are off. I'm gonna slip, shift right into Pond Hill East. This is the southeast corner of Northwest Military in Loop sixteen oh four. You have Starbucks on the corner. You have the McAllisters right there. We have platted this into three separate lots. Here's a lot next to Starbucks that's vacant. We have this lot right here, one-point-two-two acres, and then we have one-point-six-four acres right there. And then when you come down a little bit lower, you have this area that will be some sort of future retail, most likely owned and operated by Bitter Blue. I'm not looking to sell that. It's just a very good future retail site. And so these most likely will be restaurants. We have this one under contract right now, talking with a restaurant user here. This one next to Starbucks vacant. Uh, you probably see a lot of equipment out there right now. We're doing retaining walls, sanitary sewer, access drives, you know, everything that's been permitted through the city of Chavino Park. So it's very active. And then you have this user, it's not on my slides, but this user doing their development right there, the former Frost Bank site. So you see a lot of activity going along the front edge right now.
Yeah, and that's quite an elevation change.
It is. It is. Uh, next slide. This is more of an overview. Again, these lines are just lines on a paper, but it gives you the general sense of how this corner, you know, is developing, okay?
So Zagsby's? No?
No, they're gone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Said one's under contract. Can you tell us, is that public yet?
Yeah, it's Whataburger. This right here. This corner is Whataburger. Then moving along, this track, twenty-two acre track that we rezone is simply there, pre-planning. We don't have users for this right now, just simply on the market, talking, you know, we wanna find something that'll fit very well with Chavino Park here. This is the last remaining large acreage commercial track in Chavino Park. Uh, this is, again, lines on a paper, conceptually of how this might be developed, again. Again, lines on a paper, but we will show you, these access points are pretty fixed here due to topography and sixteen oh four access. So you'll probably see a loop road of some sort like this and then how it develops both north and south of that. We just have to see, you know, how it proceeds along. Huntington Commercial, ninety-three percent leased. Cecilia Garcia has been leasing this property for us. Uh, David Weekly Homes, Lone Star National Bank, Well-Aware and First American. They're like a HOA management company, so ninety-three percent leased, a good-looking building, you know.
First service.
First service. First service. So just about, maybe about five to six thousand square feet left in the building.
Is that a Bitter Blue building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's owned in, owned by Bitter Blue and one of the partnerships and managed through the Priority Group. So, no, no word yet on the ATM that we've gotten approved and whatnot, just slow-going on that end, so, with Lone Star. Um, adjacent to Bader House, we'll be putting this track under contract with a user for a five to six thousand square foot office building. It'll look very similar to Bader House and it's the last remaining track. It's just right there next to KFW.
And so Bader House decided not to build the second unit?
They decided not to build the second. So no, no reason given, just they might, just no reason given, so. I think they're full, you know, in their current, you know, location. So we'll have a single-story Class A office building there, you know, very low-impact. It'll fit right there. It won't encroach on any of our, you know, Huntington subdivision. That should close by the end of the year, you know, right now. Napier Park, this is our, you know, Class A garden office product. You have one of the buyers starting construction here, probably in the next sixty to ninety days. I think he's working his plans through permitting. We're working these four buildings down here. We have one prospect that we're working on, trying to put it together. But we'll be probably starting right back here in the, you know, very way back, right there with our first building, about a forty-eight-hundred square foot building. These are not spec buildings. We're not building these to see who will come. We're working with end-users, have contracts together and then build the buildings, okay? Here's just a rendering, you know, very classic design, metal roof, stucco, rock. It doesn't mean everything has to look cookie cutter. That's not what our looking, it's not what we're trying to do here is to have a cookie cutter-type product, but following those guidelines, okay? Might change the windows a little bit, might change, you know, some of the roof, you know, the pitches, but again, kinda giving the roadmap of the architecture here. Uh, that's one of the buildings, that was on, done on Bassie Road. That building's twenty years old and it's just aged very well, so. This is not city of Chavino Park, but we just wanna tell you what's going on surrounding your community or surrounding the community. This is up near Bitter's and sixteen oh four across from Rogers Ranch. Uh, there's a Class A office building that'll be developed here. They should be starting in fourth quarter. That's on about four-point-five acres, so that's a seventy-five thousand square foot Class A, you know, building that'll be going there. Uh, the crested-in wood, you know, very good-looking building, obviously Class A. And then when you flip on the north side, this is still city of San Antonio. You have the Embry Partners Ridge Line, multifamily. Um, they're leasing up, beautiful project, you know, there, fits very well. We're now starting to master plan this north side, restaurant pads, office pads and just starting to get that on, you know, onto the market. Um, it's, you know, it's expensive land, so not in a rush. Trying to find the right users that will complement the multifamily and then all of our residential in the area. Couple photos of, some early photos of the Ridge Line multifamily. This is north of Loop sixteen oh four, again, not city of Chavino Park, but again, just bringing you up to speed on development in the area. We have the Baptist Emergency Hospital that's open, open for business. You have Cornerstone which is opening up there. They are opened, obviously. And then we have a future commercial site under contract right here uh, next to Baptist, approximately sixteen acres. Um, that's a single-user and we're under a confidentiality clause with them right now. So when I get the chance to say who they are, I will, but I can't right now. But it is complimentary to the entire area, okay? Uh, here's just another, more of a specific exhibit for that northwest corner of sixteen oh four and Northwest Military. Um, nothing's happening with the Martin Marietta Track. That's staying there, that drive. Nothing's going away. I wanna bring this up. We're shifting gears back down below Lock Hill Selma. This is Chavino Ridge. And I wanna bring this up because there is, you know, significant activity in this area. It's where the Walmart Neighborhood Market is. It also has the CVS on the corner. Um, the area in red is very approximate, but we have that under contract with a charter school. They have two other schools in the city of San Antonio and that's undergoing plating right now, so it's approximately fourteen acres. It's a, it's, it's good for the school. They had another site that fell through for them. We can deliver a site with all the utilities, what they need. They've got a green belt. This area right here, the residents are very happy, like this area is not going to be, you know, this will be a green belt right there. Traffic flow works well and so we're working with them to make this reality. You know, hopefully, construction would start first quarter of two thousand eighteen. And that's kinda the roundabout of all around sixteen oh four, so, you know, just wanted to include some of the areas outside of Chavino Park because, you know, it really does give you a complete picture of development that's going on around, you know, this general sub-market.
Okay. Daryl, do you wanna? What tracks are under development right now? What impact do you think that they're gonna have on our community from a sales tax and a business flow and valuation standpoint? What additional tracks do you think you may be selling in the next year and what is the build-out timeframe for those?
Yeah, the main, the main tracks right now are the tracks, you know, fronting on sixteen oh four, you know, east of Starbucks. You know, we have those two restaurant pads. You have to educate me. I'm not sure if, you know, like Whataburger brings in sales tax. They might not with the food. I'm just not sure.
Yes, it does.
So there's gonna be some sales tax right there. Um, if we have a ancillary use, it's complimentary to Whataburger. They'll also bring in sales tax. Um, we'll have, you know, we will be developing, you know, the area, what I call the shelf, you know, below, you know, that site. They'll all be retail and service and that should also generate sales tax for you. We don't see too many of the large office buildings coming online. I mean, we have some tracks reserved for maybe Bitter Blue development, but I don't see a lot, you know, we have, there's a lot of office along sixteen oh four right now. That might help your tax base, but not so much with sales tax, you know, per se. So I see, I see that southeast corner of Northwest Military generating, you know, being a generator of sales tax for you.
Okay. Uh, you sold the tract, the Frost tract, that's under construction. Uh, what is the, do you have a projected completion date that they've shared with you or is that confidential information?
No, it's not confidential. I just haven't been totally connected to it since we sold it. Um, and I think maybe first quarter. It might be done a little bit earlier. They have a lot of site work to do there.
Yeah, they moved a lot of dirt.
Yeah, so there's a lot of site work that they're, they're doing. Um, I know they're actively leasing. Uh, everybody will be up in Austin on Thursday. There's pretty, pretty good retail leasing seminar gathering up there on Thursday. That's where I'll be taking our restaurant. I'll be taking some other sites here. I'll be taking the sites over by the Walmart Neighborhood Market. You know, but a lot of restaurants, a lot of service-type, you know, users.
Okay. Uh, this last year, you and Curtis went up to Dallas to talk with companies. How is that process? Is that something that you'd recommend that we continue to do as a community to help others become aware of the opportunities that are available in Chavino Park?
Yeah, absolutely. It brings in, what's happening in Texas is no different than a lot of other states, but specifically Texas where it used to be, folks just stayed in their own backyard. Folks just stayed in their Dallas market. They just stayed in their Houston market. So now brokerages and development companies are, you know, very, very focused on Texas as its own region. So Dallas, Houston, they might not have looked at San Antonio before, but now, I mean, San Antonio has just been growing so much. Our wages are increasing a bit that, you know, San Antonio's a viable market. So a lot of these Dallas and Houston developers, when we go to something like a ICSC in Dallas, they're like, oh, San Antonio. You know, it's not just, oh, San Antonio. It's like, oh, San Antonio. And like, what do you have in your portfolio? So, and, and a lot of times, you know, we're, we're so accustomed to email and telephone. This is probably the one chance during the year where you can meet a lot of these folks in person. And it might be, you know, someone with LA Fitness who's there from LA, I'm not joking, from LA, but LA Fitness, and they're there with their preferred development partner. And you get them both together right there and that's kind of a rarity. And so a lot of these retailers have preferred developers now. You know, the Krogers of the world, the Trader Joes of the world, you know, the Shake Shacks of the world. And, you know, Curtis had emailed me and I was like, and I'm very glad to get those emails, you know, but sometimes we don't have contact with those folks until we meet them at, say, a show in Dallas and we're working with a preferred developer. We're not necessarily working with ABC Retail. They really don't wanna work with us. They're like, work with our preferred developer. And that's where we go to find those relationships. So, long story short, yes, it's still, you know, important and still vital because a lot of those relations, relationships are constantly changing. Who was their preferred developer a year or two ago may not be their preferred developer anymore. And so it's very important to stay in front of those folks face-to-face versus just reading, you know, a blog or seeing news releases or whatnot, so yes.
So, so right now, we have two tracks to be developed or to be completed in two thousand eighteen, commercial tracks. Uh, is there anything else that you see on the horizon for commercial development in two thousand eighteen?
I, I think we'll, we'll probably have one or two that pop up. I think the restaurant site is going to be developed, you know, in, in two thousand eighteen. It's just too good of a site. It's just demographics or demographics, location. I, I just think it's a beautiful site. I think we will, you know, find a user there. So while I'm throwing out maybe two, you know, right, sure things, there's always something that comes up and, and we have the flexibility to, to grab onto it and make it happen, so.
Okay. Does anybody else? Bob?
Daryl, um, on the Whataburger site, is that a twenty-four-hour restaurant, do you know, or is that a limited?
No, that's a, that is a twenty-four-hour.
It is for sure.
Yes.
Okay, Bill, would you confirm the availability of twenty-four-hour? I thought that we shut down at midnight.
I did too.
Yeah, Daryl, I thought that we shut down at midnight.
Do we have that discussion right now?
No, no, I'm sorry. Exactly. Bill, if you would confirm that to us. Okay? Anybody else?
I'm just hoping for the restaurant track, you'll be able to find a local person.
We're hoping to.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item six point two, public hearing, receive testimony. Item 6.2, public hearing, receive testimony and written evidence from the City of Chavno Park residents and property owners on the possible addition of A1 PUD zoning district to the list of zoning districts eligible to receive special exceptions. It is now 7:22. I'm going to recognize Mike Jansen if you want to include him, Bill. Bill?
I'm not sure he's prepared to do that, but I'll be glad to do that, Mayor. Just as an overview, in 2016, the City Council approved an authority to, of the Board of Adjustments to grant special exceptions. And those special exceptions were for rear and side setbacks. For those properties that abutted the streets of Northwest Military Highway, De Zavala, the City of San Antonio's zoning districts, O1, B1, or B2 zoning districts, or a green belt as designated by plat. And, and that allowed the Board of Adjustments to reduce setback requirements by up to 50%. So recently, we received a application in the A1 PUD, which is Huntington. And they wanted to put a sports court into, slightly into the setback. And they abut a green belt. And so, really, initial reaction was no problem because we've got you covered, Daryl. All you've got to do is schedule that. When we coordinated with the city attorney, he advised us that, to be clear and to make sure that we, we had dotted our i's, crossed our t's, et cetera, that because the, the original ordinance did not acknowledge the A1 PUD as a zoning district that was authorized, that the application should, should not go forward unless, unless that was corrected. Seemed like a relatively easy correction to do. We, we then coordinated with Planning and Zoning Commission, NRR, put it on the agenda, provided notice of public hearing. It was presented in the Planning and Zoning meeting earlier this month. And so, we are proposing that for this, for this amendment. And I'll just make note that the, the proposal, after this public hearing, we'll discuss this, would be administrative in nature because it's simply adding in what probably should have been added in initially, which was the A1 PUD. Charlie can explain in more detail why a PUD would need to be separate, would be acknowledged separately if, if you need him to do that. And then just as an administrative note, there are other areas in the zoning ordinances that probably need to be reviewed to include A1 PUD. But to keep things simple in terms of this action, so we can move forward, in fact, there's a sale pending on this of the land. And it seemed to be reasonable across the board that, that explains it. And of course, staff is recommending approval of this change in ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Do we have any citizens that have comments, concerns, questions that would like to come forward at this time? Mike? If you, Mike, if you'd give your full name and your address.
Mike Jansen, 430 Bentley Manor. Just two notes that I'll, I'll add on top of Bill's. First, it was passed unanimously by Planning and Zoning. And second, I think you all know this, this does not trump the HOA rules. So obviously, if there's an HOA restriction that does not allow these, obviously, our rule does not trump theirs. So, just those two things for you.
Thank you very much, Mike. There are no other citizens. It is now 7:25. We're going to close the public hearing portion. We're going to proceed to item 6.3, Discussion Action Ordinance O2017-017, and Ordinance Amending Section 36123 of the City of Chavno Park Code of Ordinances to Add A1 PUD Zoning District as an Eligible Zoning District to Receive Special Exceptions from the Board of Adjustments. This is an administrative ruling and our, the determination this evening will be final. Do I have a motion concerning Ordinance O2017-017?
I move that we approve Ordinance 0-2017-017.
Okay, we have a motion from Alderman Ross. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alderman Heisel has seconded the motion. Do we have any discussion? Mike?
Were, was there any citizen participation at the public hearing before P&amp;Z? And if so, what was the result or the content?
There were no citizens that signed up to speak. And, and public notice was provided in the newspaper and, and, did we do written or not? We didn't have to do written, but anyway.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6.4, Discussion Action Ordinance O2017-001, Proposed Amendments to Chapter 6 and Chapter 36 of the City's Code of Ordinances Regarding Accessory Buildings, Outbuildings, and Possible Buildings, and Portable Buildings, and the Authorization of Special Exceptions. This is a first reading. Bill?
Well, we tried to summarize your staff summary sheet and we reduced a lot of the history behind that. But I'll just kind of summarize by saying, Planning and Zoning Commission and the council have been reviewing these possible amendments to these sections since late 2014. A number of meetings have occurred. Just to remind you, at the July 24th City Council meeting, council voted to table the consideration of this item, move the discussion to a workshop. After that meeting, staff created a table which allowed, kind of a matrix, which allowed a crosswalk and a comparison of the topic, the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, amendments proposed by Alderman Simpson, amendments proposed by Alderman and Cole Mir. At that workshop, each one of those was addressed and considered. There was, in some cases, a unanimous consent. In some cases, it was only a majority consent. Nevertheless, at least three Aldermen consented, generally speaking, on the following items. And so, what was agreed upon, I've got it listed for the audience to see, is that the square foot size limitation of portable buildings would be increased from 144 to 200 square feet. There was consensus to keep the A3 zoning district to a single portable building. There was a change agreed to in the height measurement from the base foundation instead of the grade level. And that really has to do with the height of the building versus the height from the, from the ground. And that's been an issue at times, so that was a good catch. Council consensus was to keep the eight-foot height limitation and setbacks in all residential zoning districts. And they removed special exceptions for portable buildings. Next. Also, consensus was made to remove all masonry requirements for accessory buildings. And since that was removed, there was no need for special exception and that was removed as well. That summarizes that. We've included in your, in your packet, the first attachment was the, is a actual consolidated ordinance in the ordinance form that reflects those changes there, which you would be approving tonight if that's what you can choose to do. The second attachment was the tract changes of the consensus version, which basically took the P&amp;Z version and made those changes for your review. But we also included other attachments which were from the 22 workshop comparison table between the two previous motions. And also, the original approved P&amp;Z version of the ordinance, which was used as a reference point at the workshops and for the amendments from Alderman Simpson and Cole Mir. So council has several courses of action. You can approve Ordinance O2017-001 of the proposed amendment, which is reflected in your packet as the, as the results of the workshop. Or you can ultimately decline or provide further guidance or amend those as you need to. So we've tried to reflect the results of that. That has been provided for, the guidance provided to us.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bill. Do I have a motion to approve Ordinance O2017-001, Proposed Amendments to Chapters 6 and 36 of the City's Code of Ordinances Regarding Accessory Buildings, Outbuildings, and Portable Buildings?
So moved.
Now, Bob Heinzelman has made a motion to approve.
Second.
Michelle Ross has seconded the motion. We're now open for discussion. Mike?
Once again, I'm going to go back to the, the same old drumbeat that we heard from our citizens, 100 of them, saying what they wanted. We decided the consensus was to, to change what they asked for. And so, because the consensus was not to, to listen to what the citizens in A3 wanted, then that'll be the, the basis of my voting no for this ordinance.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or discussion? Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Nope.
The motion carries. Item 6.5, Discussion Resolution R2017-010, nominates 1 to 5 candidates during the nomination phase of selection process for the election of Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors 28/2019. Bill, is this your item?
It is. The city received a letter from the Bear Appraisal District, from the chief appraiser, regarding the nomination phase and selection of the election of the Bear District, Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors. There's actually two potential actions here for the city. As per the Texas Tax Code, there's a number of votes in which each taxing unit is entitled in this year's selection process. And it's been calculated as we, we, Chavno Park, have five. And then each taxing unit is also authorized to vote, that is authorized to vote, may nominate by resolution of its governing body, one candidate for each position on the Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors. So there's five directors and we have five votes. So this means that you, as a city council, can nominate up to 1 to 5 candidates for that board of directors. And that the preceding officer of the governing body shall submit the names of the unit nominees to the chief appraiser before October 15th. And then once, in receipt of the nominations, the chief appraiser will then prepare a ballot, mail it to the preceding, preceding officer of each taxing unit. And then the taxing unit, in other words, city, will have an opportunity to cast its allocated votes, which are five, by resolution and submit to the chief appraiser before the December 31st deadline. And the votes will be counted and the number of candidates with the greatest number of votes will be declared elected. So, the discussion topic of that is, is that staff, I sent out a notice of this earlier to each one of the Aldermen. And I received a response from Alderman Simpson expressing a desire to be nominated as a candidate for the election. And he's the only one I'd received candidates for. So, in courses of action, you can nominate 1 to 5 candidates by resolution. We've prepared a resolution and, you know, staff recommendations to nominate Alderman Simpson for candidate election to the Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Before we turn it over and open it up for discussion and a motion, have we done any lobbying as far as getting a vote that might be supported for our candidate? I know that it's very difficult to, for the small cities to get candidates in there unless they all kind of bond together. Have we done that?
The city has not taken any action to do that. Obviously, we haven't, you haven't taken any action to give us guidance to do that.
Okay. I'm going to entertain a resolution, entertain a motion for Resolution R2017-010, to nominate 1 to 5 candidates during the nomination phase of the selection process for the election of a Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors 2018, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I move...
Mr. Mayor, point of order. Would it be more appropriate to receive nominations before we have, adopt a, vote to adopt a, a resolution?
The resolution had a resolution with a blank in it. And so I was assuming that we would adopt the resolution inserting the blank instead of open the, you know, if you would like to entertain multiple motions for nominations, however you want to do it, Mike.
I'm just asking procedurally.
I'm, I was asking for a resolution including the name of the person that would be inserted. We have the resolution before us.
So I was just going to move to make that resolution and nominate Alderman Simpson and resident Sean Fitzpatrick as candidates for election to the Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And Mike is second in the motion.
No, Bob.
I'm sorry, Bob is second in the motion. Do we have any other, any other additions that we would like to add to that? Okay. We're now open for discussion. Michelle?
The only problem with nominating anybody from us with five votes is that if you haven't gone out and lobbied, you have to have a school district or some large entity in order to achieve a seat on the board. You just do. And if you haven't done that, this whole exercise is moot. I mean, it doesn't do anything. But, you know, I mean, we're welcome to do it, but it doesn't do anything.
Okay, does anybody have any other points? Mike?
I, I would just, out of ignorance, say, great, that's a, a great idea, but until we have a nominee, there hadn't been anything that we can lobby for. So, if we get nominees, then we can get out and start lobbying.
Okay.
But, you know, the reason I want to do this is because I was so offended by the, the BCAD budget submission to us this, this time. So, if we can, if I can get on there, maybe I can do a little, create some changes there.
Okay. Any other discussion? Technical question. Can you have half votes?
We can vote for 1 to 5. And then when we get ready to vote, I think we can apply our 5 to 2 candidates. So, I mean, I don't see that there's a constraint.
Oh, we get to vote 5 times for each candidate?
We can...
I thought we got 5 total votes.
Yeah, that's all we did.
We got 5 votes and so it's 3 and 2, or it's...
Can't we vote for 5 each?
No, no, it's 5 total votes.
Yeah, we get 5.
At this point in time, we can nominate 5 people. And then, and then we can sort out who and how we can vote for the next, you know, split our 5 votes for December, because the voting won't occur until December.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of nominating Sean Fitzpatrick and Mike, I'm sorry, Mike Simpson. I wrote your name down on the nomination part and, and that got me thrown in there. Okay. We have a motion to nominate Sean Fitzpatrick and Mike Simpson for candidates for the election of a Bear County Appraisal District Board of Directors. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item 6.6, Discussion Action Resolution R2017-011, a resolution establishing a policy to encourage adherence to the Texas Ethics Opinion and the use of city logo and political advertising. Bill?
Yes, at the 26th July City Council meeting, City Council directed staff to create a policy that addressed the use of the city logo and political advertising. So staff, in conversation with, with the city attorney, drafted a proposed policy which you see as your attachment is fairly simple. Basically, it basically states that there, the Texas Ethics Committee has made an opinion that certain candidates shouldn't use an official logo. And that also, the second part of that policy says that, that we paid for that logo with city funds, it's city property, and then therefore, we don't authorize it to be used in political campaign advertising. So it's fairly simple. It's run through the attorney. And I'll pause there for any questions.
Okay. Do we have a motion concern, to approve Resolution R2017-011, a resolution establishing a policy to encourage adherence to the Texas, to Texas Ethics Opinion and the use of the official city logo on political advertising?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion from Michelle and a second from Mike Simpson? We have a motion from Michelle, and a second from Mike Simpson. We're now open for discussion. Mike?
So, the way I read this, this policy only affects candidates?
That's correct.
So, a private citizen can do this all they want?
Well, again, the city has owns intellectual property, it's our city resource, we own intellectual property right to that. There's certain things that we can do to protect that if we wanted to, which we, we haven't done, if we wanted to copyright or trademark, that's another step that we can take. This, however, is meant to provide guidance for clarity associated with that. It was written very carefully, such that, you know, if someone were to use it, you know, there's limited actions that the city can actually take, but...
And what are those actions?
We can protest, we could...
Shake your finger at them and say, don't do that?
Yes, we could do, I mean, again, this doesn't preclude us from going and taking further steps to get a copyright or a trademark of this, of this thing, and then it would offer us more protections.
I mean, that makes sense. If we do that, then something like this has some teeth to it right now. I don't see that it has any teeth, and I don't see why we would want to do it.
It's intended primarily to be informative and to make sure people understand what's going on, and the intent would be to distribute it in the political, in the political season. We don't really, frankly, we don't have a lot of requests for people to use our logos, other than, we just don't have a lot of requests, so it's not really an issue.
And it's, it's this particular logo right here that's on the document, that is what is being stated that cannot be used, that exact logo?
That's the traditional, recent tradition of the blue S with the green P with the Road Runner in the middle of it.
Okay, but with the Chavano Park, so if somebody took that, the, the shadow logo, and put underneath it something like Friends and Realtor of Chavano Park, that makes it no longer the same thing.
Well, the, the S and the P with the Road Runner also were purchased and designed, so it is a city, a part of the city logo, which we could protest, yes.
But the way you've got it here, it is figure number one official city logo, and that's what we're saying that you can't use, so if you deviate from it a little bit, you're no longer in the official city logo. Like, for instance, they shadowed out the Road Runner, for instance. I just don't think this is, I, I think if we're gonna do something like this, we ought to seek a patent, or not a patent, but a copyright, and register it, and then come back with this.
Or trademark.
That's all.
Trademark, well, the sequence, I don't know, frankly, that it matters. I think the, the real thing is to try to put it out there so that people are informed. If council's guidance is to go seek a trademark after that, then, then I can come back to you and say, this is what the cost, and this is the procedure and time and effort it would take to do it. I think that most candidates, knowing that this is something that's frowned upon, would not use it, again, but I, I don't speak for them, they might, but I think this meets the objective that we are trying to get to.
Okay, do we have any other questions, concerns, discussion? Bill, I have a question. We have a bona fide First Amendment expert in our community, Sean Fitzpatrick. Did we happen to consult with him about the First Amendment implications associated with what we're doing as it relates to political advertising, and as it, as it relates to people using political speech? You know, people will take a Texas flag, an American flag, and they may put a slash across it, and, and as much as we may find that to be repugnant, the Supreme Court of the United States has held that that is absolutely legitimate, and if you can do that to the state of Texas flag, or the United States flag, then I think that by implication, you could do that to the logo of the city of Chavano Park. Did we, did we reach out to somebody that's a subject matter expert to understand the First Amendment implication?
Absolutely, that's why I sent it to the city attorney. And it's not our practice to send these to the citizens that might be interested in that, that really don't have a role in that, so I have...
Who also like to get paid for their services.
What's that?
Who also probably like to get paid for their services.
Yeah, so, I've, I know that it's been reviewed by two of our city attorneys, which I know they've looked at it very carefully, and it was written, actually, the language was tweaked by them so that it would, we would hold up, and it would meet our objective.
So you're telling me that this passes muster from a First Amendment standpoint? That, that's really my question. Does this pass muster from a First Amendment standpoint? Or that's not what they said?
This isn't a First Amendment issue. This is a, this is an, this is an Ethics Commission opinion that said you can't use city resources in political advertising, and if a candidate uses a, a, a city, city-funded resource, it's a violation of the Texas Ethics Commission. That, they can take up a First Amendment issue with the Texas Ethics Commission if they so choose, but the, my understanding was this simply was to put folks on notice that based on the most recent Ethics Commission opinion that came out, says that you violate Texas ethics if you do that. Now, we can put the candidates on notice that they could get in trouble with the Ethics Commission, or not put them on notice that they're gonna get in trouble with the Ethics Commission, that's up to you.
Okay. Mike?
And with that preamble, there is enforcement. A complaint to the Texas Ethics Commission can result in a fairly hefty civil fine from the commission, so if, after having issued the advisory opinion, and we adopt this, this resolution and the policy, and inform the candidate, and they decide to go ahead and do it anyhow, then I think the enforcement would lie with the Ethics Commission, and my guess is they would deal with it severely.
My experience with the Ethics Commission is that they very rarely follow through on any complaints, but that's just my personal experience.
Well, either way, it's, it's kind of, you know, we're all adults up here, and we all, I think, have pretty good reasonableness when it comes to doing what seems ethically right, and don't necessarily need to be told by an Ethics Commission to do that. As for a resident or somebody who's not a political candidate using city logo, it's just kind of one of those reasonableness, kind of gonna get laughed out of the city for using it if you, if you do, because you're, you're not an elected official, and even if you were, you shouldn't be using it, and if you're not part of the city, shouldn't be using it.
Okay.
It's common sense.
Any more discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Item 6.7, Discussion Action, City of Chavano Park Organization Chart, fiscal year 2017-2018. Bill?
Thanks. The org chart's approved annually by council, and it's included in the budget, as well as the, the budget, the employee handbook. So, budget's coming up for approval, the first draft of the final amendment with the budget will be included for consideration on 18 September. This org chart includes a number of changes. The primary change is it re-titled the position of the Planner Information Systems, Information Systems Manager to Assistant to the City Manager. It also reorganizes the org chart a little bit in the Police Department, also adds numbers next to each position representing the number of texts associated with that. I've reviewed that with city council at the workshop in, in pretty good detail, and so the motion requested, we're requesting the council approve changes in the proposed org chart.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Simpson to approve the changes to the proposed organizational chart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mike Colmier. Colmier, there being no further discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item seven, all matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincident with each listed item, discussion will generally occur. Does anybody want to pull any of the items listed in item seven? Okay, without objection, we'll proceed to item eight. Consent agenda, all matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do I have a motion to approve and/or accept items 8.1 through 812?
Mayor?
So moved.
Just a second. Yes.
I would like to pull 8.9.
Okay, we have a request to pull item 8.9. Are there any other items? Okay, Mike, do I have a motion to approve items 8.1 through 8.8 and 810 through 812?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Simpson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Bob Hanselman has seconded the motion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Brings us to item 8.8.
8.9.
8.9, I'm sorry, 8.9. Approval Resolution R. 2017-014, Texas Municipal Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan.
The city manager and I have had a discussion about this, and I'd like him to explain to everybody how we got to this point, because it seems like there are things in there that should have come to the council before it got to this point where we're now just approving it.
Yes, so approximately a year ago, it could have been longer, we did bring into city council an update, basically, and, and I can't remember if we passed by resolution or by vote, a proposal to work with Bear County on their hazard mitigation plan, so that they would develop countywide, including all the municipalities, a hazard mitigation plan. And so that was brought before council, and I can't remember the exact action, but it was approved. Bear County hired a consultant associated with that. I think there was a series of planning meetings associated with that, we had representatives on that board. What happens is that there are a number of different kinds of hazards associated with that. What they provided to the city was a menu of options, and it's a long, long, dirty list of prefabbed actions in the categories of flood, severe thunderstorms, wildfires, drought, tornadoes, hail, winter storms, flood, dam, I mean, dam failures, a number of hazards associated with that. Staff then reviewed that, selected a number of items that, that, again, they were prefabbed associated with that, and we presented that to the Bear County. Then there were some of those actions, and, and the plan, a proposed action, were included based upon our input, as well as some based upon our input that the Bear County and the consultant put in there. This plan, as, at large, with all the municipalities' input, was approved by Bear County, and it has already been considered and already been approved. And so, as part of the process, Bear County has asked that each one of the municipalities also by resolution approve the approved plan. And so, there are some, frankly, there are some points in there which seemed a bit stretched in terms of what we as a city would actively take in action for. And your point, Mayor Pro Tim, about coming in front of the, the council is a fair one, but we did not do that for, we just didn't do it. So, as I understand it, these aren't actions we must do, these are actions that are potentially possible, as it was explained to me, that Bear County will take all these proposed actions and collectively the plan, and then they will apply for a, kind of a blanket grant associated with that. There'll be some awarded amount of grant money associated with this, and then based upon that, there'll be a process of selection in terms of which grants might be allocated, funding for which different entities associated with that. So, part of what I understand is that it's advantageous for Bear County to have as many of these actions as, as possible to account for their, their grant application associated with that. I can answer, I'll do my best to answer any of the questions you might have specifically, but that's the process that was generally taken, associated with that.
Okay. Before we get there, Bill, where are, where is the City Managers Association there? Twenty-eight municipalities, counting Bear County and San Antonio and Bear County. And where are you and the other city managers? What, what are the other city, what are the other cities doing and, on this?
Yeah, each one of the cities are individually considering, just like we are. They've been asked to, to adopt this plan. In other words, the advantage of this plan was it's countywide, and each entity is responsible for having a hazard mitigation plan. To have each municipality and each entity actually go out and do this, it would have been at great cost. There's, Bear County bore the, the cost of this, associated with this, to my knowledge, it didn't cost us anything. So what's, what's left is we have an overarching plan, you know, if we would have done it individually, it probably would have been a little more tailored to the city of Chavano Park, but for the broad purposes of what we need, it, it meets our requirements, and, and so, anyway, this action just adopts the Bear County plan, which then has an element that's Chavano Park, but has a broader sense to that.
Okay.
If we don't adopt this, then we're left without a hazard mitigation plan.
By state law, are we required to have a hazard mitigation plan?
We are required. I don't know what the authority is, Chief Naughton, can you provide, you know that off the top of your head, what authority is?
The emergency management plan for the state of Texas, we are required to have.
Yeah, and so, and so we have to have our own plan, and the question is whether we're going to spend the money to justify why we're going to rewrite the plan, because this is a government, you know, I believe this is going to be a governmental action to where we have to go through and say, we've selected A because we've done research, and we know that A is a good idea, and what we're doing is we're saying we're relying on Bear County. Is that what I'm hearing you say, Bill?
No. What I'm saying is that we're required by the state of Texas, like the chief said, to have a plan. We coordinated with Bear County, we did provide input into this, a lot of this is our input, some of it is, is their interpretation of our input, and, and, but it, it fairly closely matches what we provided, with some exceptions, and so, you know...
Okay, because I didn't hear that the first time, I didn't hear, and maybe I just missed it, that you and Chief Naughton had participated in this process.
Staff participated in this process.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have missed that. Okay, I'm gonna open it up for a motion to approve Resolution R. 2017-014, Texas Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Michelle. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mike Simpson. Okay, we're now open for discussion. Michelle?
I just asked him to give that briefing and to go over everything, because when I first read it, and it said we were burying all of our utility lines, and it was gonna cost us millions of dollars, that, you know, I don't want us to be locked into having to do any of the things on the plan, so as long as that's not a mandate, I'm fine.
It's not a mandate, we don't, you know, all this is based upon available funding, available funding that we would have available would be based upon a grant of some sort. Something like that is really unrealistic based upon the cost of that, but you would mitigate hazards if you did it.
Okay, so, Michelle, I think that that's an excellent point. If we've agreed to do this, from an environmental standpoint, the National NRDC could come in and say, y'all said you're gonna do this, find the money. Is there a limitation in the, in the plan that says, we're gonna do this if we get grant money, but otherwise, we're not gonna do this?
There is a limitation, subject to funding.
Yeah, but is it our funding, or is it grant?
There's no requirement that we fund it.
Because we have money to fund things, and we, you know, I just hate to walk into somebody swinging a baseball bat. If it's subject to somebody else's money, then I'm, I'll take two, but if it's subject to us using our reserves to pay, to put, to bury electrical cables in the old section of Chavano Park where there is nothing that, that resembles topsoil, I have difficulty appreciating that we're gonna be able to do that. You know, we could spend all of our... You know, we could spend all of our reserves and get that taken care of, and if it's subject to grant funding, great, but if it's subject to us, I just have, Michelle?
Under potential funding sources, on, under one of the items, it says local revenues, and to me, or other funding sources, it does not say grants.
It doesn't say grants specifically, but, you know.
Can we amend the motion to add that?
Yes, you can amend the motion.
And no one's going to, yeah, no one's gonna, go ahead.
Then I'll amend, did I, was that my?
It was your motion with Mike's second.
Okay, then I'll amend the motion to include that all funding sources will be grants.
Okay, Mike, would you consider that a friendly amendment and consent to the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, as a friendly amendment, it's going to replace the primary amendment, or the primary motion. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, so we have a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Seventeen zero one four, Texas Municipal Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan, subject to the limitation that all funding will be grant provided. There being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries, which brings us to item nine, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't.
We just approved it.
Okay, sorry.
I think that's it.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
It was Bob and Mike Colmier. We're going to take a seven-minute break.